We're going to start with a public hearing on the district-wide code of conduct.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight with Sarah Sagner and we're presenting the district's code of conduct. Every year, the district revises its code of conduct and the Board of Education reviews the conduct at a public hearing and then we'll be voting on whether or not to accept the code of conduct at their next meeting. So Sarah's going to tell you a little bit about the process and some of the changes in our code of conduct this year.
This year, me and three of my fellow students presented an interest in the dress code and changes that we thought should be made. So, we had a stakeholder committee with teachers, administrators, students like myself, and parents. And we discussed changes to the dress code that we thought would be really important. And then after that first meeting, we had the code of conduct be put on an Office 365 document so we could all edit it and put our own language that we thought was important into it. So, we proposed that we make the dress code more gender-neutral by removing language that talks about articles of clothing that are specific to certain genders such as tube tops that are generally worn by female students. We also want to remove our language talking about head coverings with the exceptions of hoods because those can be a distraction to teachers and fellow students. And... ...and more language about electronic cigarettes in school.
So typically, the way we've revised the code in the past is that district administrators weigh in and then we make the changes. And this year, the discussion was really rich around the table. People really spoke passionately about not only the language surrounding the code of conduct but with regard to the dress code, but the use of the word suggestive in the code of conduct, right, which really only applies to women. And so with the help of our Highlands students and our high school students and our students from Rochambeau, teachers, parents, we really have made some really wonderful changes in the code. The changes are actually delineated for you. I'm not going to go through all of them today. Do you have any questions?
I want everyone here to appreciate that the student who spoke with incredible poise is an eighth grader. We should really be incredibly proud.
So if you don't have any questions right now, feel free to reach out and the code will be on the agenda for the next meeting.
I just want to thank you very much, Sargarden, and certainly thank you, Sarah, and the entire committee. I think, you know, our vision for this process was that it would be one that would be collaborative and one that would involve the voices of our children. We believe that it is critically important to have them at the table each and every time we're talking about anything that has to do with that novel concept. So, I'm really pleased to see that you worked through that process and congratulations and thank you for that. And also, thanks to the students who came to us at the beginning of the year and raised issues and concerns that they had. You know, at that point in time, early on in the fall, we had made the commitment and the decision to ensure that they were involved in this process moving forward. So, congratulations again. Thank you very much for all of your hard work. It's very much appreciated.
Great. Thank you, thank you. So now, I'll welcome you all to our regular Board of Education meeting. Today's Monday, June 11, 2018. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Next, we'll have announcements, brief announcements, from the board.
Yes. What I really wanted to speak about was earlier this week, or actually last week, I went to the Moving Up or the Graduation Ceremony at Rochambeau. And it was remarkable because Sean Kirkpatrick, one of our own who now plays in the NBA, attended. And to make a long story short, he cried for the entire 10 minutes that he spoke. He wept, actually, would be a better way of putting it. And he talked about what he found at Rochambeau, what he found in the district, and he found a family. And it was one of the most moving things that I've ever seen. And I want to thank everyone in the district, all the administrators, but I particularly want to thank Paul Bratcher and everyone at Rochambeau for what they're delivering for our kids who go to Rochambeau and have made it a beautiful place. So, it was really moving. And when it was over, I went and shook his hand and he said, "Are you Mr. Norris?" And I said, "Yes." And he said that my son was the first person ever to befriend him when he moved into the school. I was proud, but that's besides the point. Oh, right. And I also went to the retirement party for the young gentleman sitting over there. And thank you for everything that you've done for our district for all the years. And please come back.
So, very briefly, a few of us did march in the Juneteenth Parade on this past Saturday morning. I was very fortunate to attend the middle school and high school sports awards night. I was also at the Rochambeau Retirement Dinner. And many of us were at the retirement dinner for our Joe Clardy as well.
I'll be brief. I'll mention just a few things. A couple of us were at the high school science research and engineering symposium. And it is always so impressive to see the work that is being done by our students, both in science research, presentations by our senior students, boards by our younger students, the construction and engineering projects by the Project Lead the Way students. So, it's always a real pleasure to be there. I also attended the CL2 Museum of Human Rights, the Critical Literacy Classes, 7th Grade at Highlands, did a human rights museum. All the students were involved in displays where they had to choose a particular human right and provide information about it, what they called artifacts about it, and really inform fellow students, parents, community members who came by. Freedom of speech, you know, gay rights, incarceration, just you name it, they really were involved with it. And it was a tremendous learning experience for all of them and for me viewing the exhibits. Some of us were at City Hall on the National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And Mayor Roach made a proclamation. There were some speeches. And you know that we've, in this district, been really proactive in terms of safety for our students. And so, it was really important that we be there. And Kane and I also had the pleasure of attending the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association Annual Meeting and Dinner. And it's a terrific opportunity to network with other school board members from across the region and other superintendents. And also, the program featured something called Civics in Action, which is, we've been talking about that in our curriculum and instruction subcommittee meetings and ways of highlighting the ways we actually do provide civics instruction to our students. And I will say that this year has provided really rich opportunities for our students to be involved in civics. And they have risen to the occasion.
So I attended the Spring Scholar-Able Awards, and I want to congratulate all of those who received that honor. To be able to participate in sports is wonderful, but to be able to achieve a score of 90 and above while you're participating and doing so well in sports is truly something to be recognized. And I don't think I ever remember as many full teams being recognized as we did this spring. So again, congratulations to those students. And finally, Charlie and I had some fun at the Spelling Bay over at Church Street.
I couldn't spell any of those words.
So, the first annual Spelling Bay, and I know that Dr. Hand did the day before us with the younger students. Charlie and I did the 4th and 5th graders. And it really was a lot of fun.
It was great.
Some of the words really were very difficult, but the kids did a great job.
Thank you.
Hi, just very briefly. We had the end-of-year band concerts or concerts at Eastview and at the high school. Again, they get better as a year goes by and they get better every year. Senior awards at the high school and then senior sports awards recently. Juneteenth Parade was this just past weekend. And thank you to the retirees and all the years of service that you have all put in. It's really a testament and thank you so much. And one other thing we saw was at Eastview. They did Shakespeare at Eastview, A Midsummer Night's Dream and A Comedy of Errors. It was terrific watching these little 6th graders recite Shakespeare word-for-word without a stutter, with English accents. I mean, they really went out and the teachers and everybody really did a fantastic job there. So, thank you.
The only other thing that I would like to mention, I hope I'm not preempting you, we have our new Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Scott Pepper. This, I believe, is your first official kind of? Second, first? Second, okay. Board meeting, Scott joined us officially on June 1st. And just wanted to give you a heartfelt welcome to the White Plains family. We look forward to working with you. And thank you.
Has he earned that clap yet, bud?
Yes. That's a good one. So, next we'll go to the retirees. So, next we'll go to the recognition of our retirees and 25-year staff members.
This is the end of my first year in White Plains. And it's really been a tremendous year. And I feel, and I said this at Joe Clardy's retirement dinner on Wednesday, on Friday night, I feel cheated in a lot of ways because the folks who are retiring this year are just tremendous educators in every way. You know, and you think you become superintendent of schools or a school board member or an assistant, and you stop being in awe and stop learning. No, it just gets more. It becomes more. And the awe that you find for teachers and for administrators that are doing the work every day, it really is inspiring. And these folks are all inspiring. So, you know, from my perspective, I'm very fortunate, I feel very fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with you, those who are retiring. I can tell you that the city of White Plains and the White Plains City School District proper are appreciative for all of the years of service, all the time and talent you've given to this community and to our children. There are never words that can encapsulate the sacrifices that one makes over one's career. But what I can tell you is that each and every one of you have made an impact, a positive impact, on many, many human beings. Because of you and because of your dedication to children and your dedication to education, there are hundreds, and in some cases, Mr. Clardy, thousands of men and women, younger and older, out there in the world, making a difference. So, for us, for teachers, for educators, for principals, we can rest knowing that after all of those years of service, you have truly made a mark on the world. So, thank you very much to all of our retirees. We're also recognizing those who have achieved 25 years of service to the White Plains City School District, which in and of itself is tremendous. 25 years. I hope that I could say that I've 25 years of service. It's a goal. It's a goal. But I'll tell you, though, for those of you who are achieving that milestone this evening, again, on behalf of the Board of Education, on behalf of myself and the administrative team, thank you for all of those many years of service. And we hope that we can get, I mean, we hope that we can work with you for another 25 years. Because, you know, your dedication to our kids and our community is what makes this all work. You know, when you walk around White Plains, when you walk around the school district, when you have the opportunity like me to go into every one of the schools and to see all of the classrooms, what I can tell you is what I see a lot of are smiles. I see a lot of smiles. And somebody might say, "Well, that's because you're the superintendent. You walk in the room and everybody smiles." No. I see genuine smiles when people don't even know that I'm looking at them. And that's because our school district is a really special place. And that's why you have so many folks who spend so much time here, because it is a really special place. So, thank you to those of you who are achieving that milestone this evening. Because of you, White Plains continues to be a special place.
Juan Alvarez. Jean Berger. Mary Brennan could not be here tonight. Carol Burke. Torrance Burrows. Jacqueline Cabrera. Carolyn Chapman. Grace Cipollaro. Joseph Clardy. Yolanda Cumming. Paula Dalto. Maria DiPaola. Eliana Fernandez. Frank Fariigno. Deborah Forman. Hector Garcia. Terry Garrity. Phoebe Gilman. Wendy Hineu. Lorraine Isaac. Richard Kaufman. Rose Quick. Eileen Levy. Jane Markham. Janice McLean Johnson. Louise Messina. Neil Mettler. Lori Mallow. Nancy Murphy. Lori O'Neil. Roberto Patinji. Patricia Pazlasny. Gareja Ravindranath. Michael Roma. Lynn Rose. You're taking Richard's too. Yes, you said that. Thank you. Anthony Russo. Leanne Santa Donato. Diane Scortino. Connie Servello. Claire Strati. Angelina Triano. Deidre Washington. Ruth White. Gail Young. And Amy Zorovich. And then we have 25 years of service, Betsy Chiketti. Diana Fiero. Carmen King. Lori O'Neil. And Anna Maria Salazar.
Congratulations, everyone. This is a special night. Enjoy it if you're retiring. And for the 25 years, we want 25 more years. So... Do we have any communication? Next, our public participation portion of the meeting. The public is invited to address the board and superintendent on any matter relating to the White Plains Public Schools. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Please also respect the privacy and dignity of all individuals, whether students, faculty, administrators, or others. The administration will be happy to address privately any school-related matters of a more personal nature.
Hi. My name is Michael Craver. I spoke at the May meeting about my concern regarding the district's rising enrollment. I'm here to talk about three things that have happened since the May meeting which relate to the issues I brought up then. First, I attended kindergarten roundup for my son. One of the parents in attendance asked a question relating to the timing of lunch and recess. The principal responded to the question by saying the school does not have flexibility to change the timing because the school is already operating at full capacity. In my own eyes, this is not a big deal because I don't have an issue with the timing of lunch or recess. And I've been quite pleased with the education my daughter has gotten in that elementary school over three years. Nonetheless, I'm concerned to hear that certain options for improvements are already cut off because the school is operating at full capacity. I worry that other problems will go unaddressed if rising enrollment limits the options which would otherwise be available. Second, since I spoke at the meeting in May, our city's government approved a plan to develop the property where Good Counsel Academy used to be, adding yet more new residences to White Plains. According to the developer's draft environmental impact statement, the project is expected to add 28 students per year to the school district. On its own, 28 additional students would not be alarming or probably even worth talking about. But that is 28 students on top of the increases that were already projected at a time when some of our district's schools are already operating at or near capacity. Third, the video of my remarks at the May meeting generated an active discussion on the Facebook page called White Plains Citizens to Be Heard. Residents of White Plains seem to have a whole bunch of ideas about what has caused our district's enrollment to increase so much. Some said that the sale of homes in their neighborhoods has picked up recently, which might explain part of the increase. Some speculated that the recent closure of Good Counsel Academy and other private schools is contributing to the increase. Some said that the school bus stops in their neighborhoods have gotten much more crowded over the years even though there has been no new development. They speculate that multiple families are living in certain homes in violation of our building code. Others said that lots of students are being transported to White Plains schools from other municipalities. Clearly, this is an issue that many people in White Plains think is worthy of discussion. It does nobody any good for that discussion to be based on speculation or personal anecdote. Instead, we need an informed, transparent, and organized discussion operating around concrete facts. I'm asking you to lead that discussion. City Hall has shown no signs of slowing down its plans for continued population growth via development of new residential buildings. It is critical that we have a conversation about rising school district enrollment before the character and quality of our district are sacrificed. Please provide the public with data showing where the enrollment increase has come from over the last few decades, whether it be the new buildings that were built or somewhere else. Please explain to the public what enrollment number will require us to add new classrooms. And please begin to inform the public either of what your plan is to add new classrooms or how you plan to avoid needing them. In sum, please provide the public with the data needed to have a transparent, educated discussion. And please recognize that our community needs you to lead that discussion. Thank you.
Let's see here. Did I mess it up? Okay. Hi, I'm Michael Villafane. On behalf of Christine Holden and myself and the White Plains PTA Council, we wish to congratulate and thank the retiring teachers and administrators for teaching and working with our children. In particular, we want to thank Lori Mallow, the long-serving teacher liaison for the PTA Council. We appreciate her knowledge and insights over the years. She's been there well. She’s been there well before I got there. I don’t even know how long actually she’s been there, but she’s been... Sorry. But she’s been incredible and so helpful to us, and we just from the bottom of our hearts wanted to thank her. Also, on a personal note, even though I was only in Eastview Middle School for my child for one year, I really on a personal level want to thank Principal Joe Clarity. We had a lot of conversations over that one year that were very, very enlightening. And the school has run so well, and we really appreciated our time there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, the end of the year is full of outstanding activities, and I’ve really enjoyed getting to just about as many of them as I possibly could. From everything from our awards to scholarship presentations, the Rotary Scholarships, Latino-U Scholarships, just so many different opportunities to recognize and celebrate our students’ accomplishments. Prom took place and everything was great, right, Ms. Clarity? Perfect. Field days, picnics, I think Dr. Tizia scooped 250 snow cones last Friday, was that right? About that? Yeah. To take it another road. You know, so just really great activities that, again, I think are... It’s indicative of our community and the commitment of not only our parents and guardians, but our faculty and staff members, our principals. So many great things to celebrate our kids and to recognize how wonderful their accomplishments at school truly are. Certainly for the class of 2018, we’re going to have the opportunity to celebrate them next week, but this is a truly impressive graduating class. Some of you may have had the opportunity to see the list of... A partial list of colleges and universities that our students were accepted to. I was stunned, not because I was surprised that they got into all these wonderful schools, but just the number, the sheer number of schools that our students were able to gain access to. It’s really a testament to our community, so congratulations to the class. Church Street was covered on the news a couple of weeks ago for “One Book, One School.” I think it’s in its 10th year, I believe, and it really is a wonderful opportunity for our kids. I was at the kickoff, the unveiling of the book, and our students were jumping up and down as if they were about to get the next, you know, greatest video game, but no, it was a book! And they were thrilled, and as they should be. It’s a great book, and it’s a great community-building and literacy-building activity at Church Street. MAS had their circus today sponsored by the PTA, had a chance to go over there, that was really fantastic. Ridgeway got together a couple of weekends ago and participated in the Autism Speaks Walk. Again, just tremendous, tremendous work. Post Road, we were with our Post Road friends on Saturday morning, and the Youth Bureau for the Father’s Day Initiative and Awards this year, celebrating our dads and celebrating the work that they do with their children. GW, I went to one of the toughest press conferences I’ve ever been to where the press corps was asking me questions about the district, even harder questions sometimes than I get from Trustee Brady. But they were amazing, and you know, this is all for the Cherry Tree Press, which is going to be released in the coming days. So, just a lot of really great things, and that’s just elementary school, and that’s just a couple of things. We are also going to have our representation of student... Or I should say this, our student representatives to the Board of Education next year. We had 13 students apply. There was a panel at the high school that selected them based on criteria and merit of their peers, and we have a male and a female student who will be serving as liaison to the Board of Education next year. It’s fantastic, and thanks again. Thanks again to Principal Clarity, her team, and of course Ms. Brummer. I think you had been talking about that for a couple of days, and it’s great to see it come to fruition. We also have our strategic planning set, and thanks to our volunteers, but we’re all ready to go for August. Don’t forget summer reading. Remember to remind every child you see to make sure they’re reading all summer long. And I’d also like to wish all of our dads, all of our grandpas, all of our guardians a very happy Father’s Day. Very, very important, yes. And White Plains is really unique that way. I think I talked to Mr. Villafane about this, you know, way back in the beginning of the year. We have dads and grandpas involved in all levels of our school district, which is really tremendous. It’s so important, and we want to continue to have more and more of that involvement. But certainly, Happy Father’s Day to our dads, and again, to all of you, congratulations on a wonderful year. Really a lot to be proud of. Great job. Thank you.
Next, we’ll move to our summary action items. We have 28 summary action items with the revised item 19.
Irene DeLello, item 14, page 3. Just going to remove.
Is that... Yeah, that’s it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. We have 28 summary actions with corrections and additions as noted.
Yeah, I do also would like to recognize the donations. $500 from the ExxonMobil Educational Alliance for GW. Golf balls from Mr. Grobe for the athletic program. $10,000 from the Kurtz Family Fund for the Margaret L. Kurtz Scholarship Fund. $1,000 from Dr. David Elcott and Rabbi Shira Milgram for the Acts of Loving Kindness...
Hesse.
Hesse. A word, thank you. $650 from Jesse Osorio for the Joseph Rivera Memorial Scholarship Fund. $1,025 from various donors for the Pasquale Evangelista Scholarship Fund. $1,660 from various donors for the Lizvink-Hilago Scholarship Fund. $240 from Andrea Robinson for the Dorothy Ann Peters Memorial Scholarship. $500 from Jason Bayok for the Barbara O’Garrow Memorial Scholarship Fund. CDWG for an HP Chromebook for the Family Technology Night. And a $200 gift card award from Sandra Serrano for Rochambeau. Thank you very much for those generous donations.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
I abstain.
For a very good reason.
Just on 17. Can I make one comment also on item 19? Is that okay? I just want to... Just for the public’s benefit, item 19, we just created... We approved to create 7.7 positions, and you’ll remember that this is directly tied to the approved budget. So, these are budgeted positions. These are positions that were vetted and reviewed during the budget creation, and we are now certifying and rather approving those positions, creating those positions. Thank you.
Next, we’ll move on to other actions. Our first other action is the recommended approval of the administrative appointments to tenure of the following. Gary West, Director of Fine Arts K-12 Elementary Summer School. Matt Cameron, Director of Athletics. Valerie Cadet, Assistant Principal, Middle School Highlands. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, so I’m going to invite our speakers to come up and say a few words related to each of our tenure candidates. I would also like to offer my congratulations and thanks to all three of you. It’s been wonderful getting to know you over the course of this year, and certainly looking forward to a continuous, strong relationship moving forward after... Hopefully after tonight’s vote. Dr. Hand?
So, good evening. I get to speak about Gary West. Gary West began his career in White Plains in September of 2002. Accepting a position as a district-wide music teacher, he taught classes at Mamaroneck Avenue School, Ridgway School, and White Plains High School. During the next six years, he continued developing exemplary skills as a classroom teacher before making a decision to move into an administrative position. In the summer of 2009, he was appointed the Coordinator of Fine Arts K-12 and Elementary Summer School. He continued in that position for four years until an opportunity to expand the scope of his work came in front of him. That happened in 2015. This led him to his current position of Director of Fine Arts K-12 and Elementary Summer School. Over the last three years, Gary has led his department with diligence, integrity, and when appropriate, a sassy sense of humor, which I’ve seen for myself. He has supported the professional growth of the teachers by including in his department meetings a spotlight on instruction. This is a time during each meeting when teachers are encouraged to share best practices with their colleagues. It is a way to naturally foster a sense of collegiality and collaboration amongst teachers who work across multiple buildings and within multiple disciplines... Or across multiple disciplines. In addition, Gary has worked with his department to create a shared fine arts vision statement K-12. The development of a fine arts vision statement K-12 is a powerful process that will help guide department curricular decisions and reinforce its commitment to continued improvement. In preparation for the New York State Learning Standards for the Art, Gary has provided professional development opportunities for teachers to begin to explore the new standards and to review our existing curriculum in relation to them. As an instructional leader, Gary has provided ongoing coaching and support to his probationary teachers to build their capacity while also holding his tenured teachers accountable for continuous growth. His work ethic, high expectations, and positive attitude have helped him to navigate through challenges and celebrate numerous successes as he continues to strive for excellence in fine arts education. Most recently, Gary was recognized by the Westchester County School Music Association for his support of music education across Westchester County. As part of his expanded responsibilities in the role of director, Gary was also charged with full supervision of the elementary pre-K to summer school program. In preparation for the program, he has worked collaboratively with his colleagues, the elementary English language arts and math coordinators, as well as the technology department to analyze data in order to target students who would benefit from additional academic support before starting their next school year. Under Gary’s leadership, the elementary summer school program is a warm and nurturing experience for the students and a collaborative environment for teachers to work in. Another advantage of having Gary supervise the program is that every day starts out with a community sing-along. It is an honor to recommend Gary West for tenure in the White Plains City School District. Gary’s high level of energy, commitment to excellence, vast knowledge of fine arts curricula, and can-do spirit make him a valuable asset to our leadership team and to our district. Thank you, Gary West.
I can give a sassy speech. I just really want to say a quick thank you to the board. Actually, the board are probably the ones that have been here the longest with me of everyone sitting in this room, and I’ve had so many opportunities in White Plains, and it’s really just because of the faith you’ve had in me. You know, I ran the STAR Program for a while. I was the testing coordinator for three years. All of these things I know came to me because you trusted that I could do them, and they made me a really strong... Just a stronger administrator. So, it was a lot of work and a lot of responsibility, but I’ve enjoyed all of it, and I’m really excited to continue my work here, so thank you.
Principal Clarity. Now, I will say that Ellen is recovering from laryngitis. And she’s been working to make sure her voice is perfect for tonight.
Thank you.
You’re welcome.
I appreciate it.
And Mr. Cameron.
Now, I don’t have to explain. Come on up here. I’m moving the mic.
You can move the mic.
I’m moving the mic. So, I’ve prepared some remarks even though I don’t have to because I work so closely with Matt, and it’s such a pleasure every day. I could almost begin and end there, but I won’t. Matt is a valued and critical member of the leadership team at White Plains City School District. The Athletic Director is an integral part of any successful school program. White Plains has a love of tradition and excellence that goes back many generations. Understanding how to honor the past while growing and adapting to the 21st century is a crucial and complicated process. Mr. Cameron is able to do this. He has supported and bolstered our existing programs while introducing sports such as bowling to the offerings available here at the high school. His affection for our students, athletes or not, his willingness to pitch in and support the high school administration, the relationships he’s formed with parents, athletes, coaches, and staff are all impressive. Mr. Cameron communicates clearly and effectively with coaches so that they have the tools they need to support their players beyond the court or field. He’s established a captain’s council and meets regularly with our student athletes. Matt has formed meaningful, purposeful relationships with everyone, students and families especially. His work with our middle school athletes and his outreach to the parents of grade-eight athletes, his participation in the White Plains High School Sports Hall of Fame and on the Tiger Fans Committee all serve to establish Matt as a meaningful presence in the school and the community. In fact, in just three years, he has become an integral part of our community and schools. He’s fair, consistent, and thoughtful in all of his interactions. His sense of humor and genuine warmth have helped to make our athletic programs as strong as they are. It is a pleasure for me to count Matt among my most valued colleagues, and it’s an honor to recommend him for tenure as Athletic Director for the White Plains City School District.
We weren’t supposed to speak, Gary.
Thank you, Ellen. And Dr. Ricker, thank you, Board of Ed. Thank all of you for giving me the opportunity. I feel very fortunate to be here. It’s a great place to work. We have amazing kids. In my prior athletic administration job, I worked with a good team, but nothing like the group of people that I work here. Ellen’s been great. I learn every day from her. Ernie, our relationship is excellent at the middle school, and it just gives us the opportunity to provide great experiences for our kids. So, thank you, everybody, and I look forward to a lot more years here at White Plains.
Next, I’d like to invite Principal Spatafor, Ernie Spatafor, up to say a few words about Assistant Principal Valerie Cadet.
So, good evening. It’s my great pleasure to recommend Ms. Valerie Cadet for tenure as an Assistant Principal at Highlands Middle School. During her time in White Plains, Ms. Cadet has demonstrated herself to be a highly skilled educator and an inspiring instructional leader. In a short period, Ms. Cadet has had a markedly positive effect on the Highlands community. She’s implemented a systematic approach to the RTI program, which incorporates problem-solving strategies to clearly identify learning issues and increase our capacity to support our struggling learners. She’s provided an organization and structure to the Committee on Special Education Annual Review Process, which facilitates access to information and benefits students. For the past three years, she’s taken charge of the very visible task of coordinating the Moving Up Ceremony, resulting in a memorable experience for our students and their families, and highlighting the presence of students at that ceremony. I would continue to list any number of administrative tasks that Ms. Cadet has done well. She brings a host of talents to an extremely difficult job. She’s an excellent communicator, has a depth of pedagogical knowledge, and demonstrates her leadership skills and instructional expertise consistently. However, her most impressive trait is her ability to build relationships with students. Ms. Cadet seems innately capable of simultaneously advocating for a child and holding them accountable. As a result of the trust that she inspires in students, they actively seek out Ms. Cadet when in distress. She’s the ultimate student advocate who deals calmly with even the most bizarre middle school behaviors and always looks for positive interventions. Therefore, with great confidence in her abilities as an administrator and her potential for future growth as an educator, that I recommend to Dr. Ricker and the Board of Education the appointment to tenure of Ms. Valerie Cadet. I look forward to her continuing contributions to both the academic and co-curricular life of our students at White Plains Middle School.
So, he didn’t tell us we had to say anything, and I have the same disease Ellen has. I think it’s dealing with students all day, but I love to talk to them. So, I just want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Ricker, the Cabinet for your confidence in me. I waited a long time... I waited a long time to take this step as an administrator because I wanted to be someplace where I felt that I could grow and advocate for students who need a voice, and I'm really happy with my choice to be here. I'm really happy with your confidence in me, and I want to come back and get one of those 25-year plaques, so let's figure that out. I also want to thank my family and my tribe of friends. I'm really, I'm just so blessed to have you. It takes a village to raise my children, so thank you, everyone. Just thank you.
Well, thank you. Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry. I just wanted to say thank you again. Thank you all, and, you know, the commonality here, I think the common thread among all three of these candidates, and you heard it, it's kids first. It's about relationships. It's making sure that our children are okay, and it's doing everything that we can do and that they can do to support White Plains and the mission of White Plains. So, again, thank you all. Congratulations in advance, and thank you to the loved ones and the family members who came to support as well.
Okay, so now, without further ado, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I have to abstain.
So, next, we'll move to the recommended approval of the appointment of Dr. Linda Oxer to the position of Interim Director of Resources effective July 1, 2018, through such time as a Director of Human Resources is hired. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the Treasurer's Report for April 2018 as per our attachment. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the 2017-18 tax warrant. May I have a motion?
Second.
Do we have any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of replenishment of the general fund reserves as of June 30, 2018. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of Council's recommendation for a resolution to execute stipulations of settlement in the following tax surcharge proceedings as per our backup.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended approval of an adjustment to the 2017-18 budget for field trips as per our attachment. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended acceptance of a local government records management improvement fund grant as per our backup. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, under bids and contracts, we have the recommended acceptance of a cooperative bid for diesel fuel and kerosene, 2018 through 2019. We have the recommended rejection of bid number F2017-47 for locksmith services, and we also have the recommended approval of Fiber Fundamentals 2016 contract. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do we have any questions on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, next, we'll have our board discussions under our board committees. Well, our human resources met, and we had our appointments to tenure and discussed other items that remain confidential. Any other committee, any other board committees met?
Special Education met, pupil services, and the subject was guidance services. At the middle school and high school, we had Ellen Darty, Ernie Spatafor, their principals. Sarah Hall is the Assistant Principal for Guidance Services, which is a newly created position for this year. Lisa Burke is the lead middle school guidance person, and Erin Harrison is the lead high school guidance person. And again, this is a new administrative structure for guidance, and it was very impressive. We're really taking guidance services to the next level, really as a discipline, supporting the standards, really working on college and career readiness, how middle school relates to post-secondary goals, how the high school relates to post-secondary goals. At the high school, there's professional development for the guidance counselors. There's a real emphasis on collegiality and sharing on guidance visits to colleges, all in support of our students, and really, you know, there's a real guidance curriculum now, so it was, yeah, very impressive to see the next level of guidance services for our kids.
Also, I wanted to mention, we did meet for finance.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did, and we discussed our audit plans, I believe, for the, yeah, yeah. Any other report-outs?
Curriculum instruction, we had to postpone, so we'll be meeting later in the month.
So, thank you, everyone, for staying for our meeting. Before we go into exec session, we have John Shepherd and John Misavich. We want to thank you as usual for all you do to help us get our meetings out. People do comment that they've seen us on TV, I want you to know. They really do. And just thank everyone for just being here and for all that you do to keep our district moving forward and our children moving quicker than ever. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn into exec session to discuss matters of a personnel nature?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.